Are you ready to go right at noon, Renee?
I'm ready when you are.
Okay, everyone, I'm showing it's 12 noon on the rise in time. Welcome to the city council work session of October 29. To start us off, we have Renee Smith, our grants manager. She'll start us off with a presentation.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. Since they were talking about the American Rescue Plan for negative economic impact projects within the departments as we talked about at the last session. Here's a very quick overview of sort of the cuts of money that we're working with and how we're determining what we have available. And then we're going to just turn it over to the departments to briefly talk about what their projects are and how it relates to other funds and how they come to the determination. They've been able to bring their their top needs and priorities based on the feedback we got from council a couple of weeks ago. They did go back, look at their projects, rework their numbers, and just make sure that this, these are the priorities that the city is currently using. So with that, I'm just going to turn it right over to Vicki.
Okay, Public Works Director Vicki Nemechek.
Vicki Nemechek, Public Works. Thank you, Renee, and thank you, Mr. Escobille. I'm going to go through just a quick description of each item. If I do have more information on most of these items, if anybody's interested, but I did supply these short descriptions to Jennifer for the council's use. We'll start with the municipal building duct, duct valves and equipment cleaning. The state OSHA office completed an air quality study on the municipal building in 2019. They made three recommendations. Those recommendations were to balance the airflow, which we in fact hired an engineer, an HVAC engineer, and did that. So that is completed. The second was to clean the ducts, and the third was to add humidity to the building. So the first, our first priority item is ducts, valves, and HVAC equipment. In the municipal building need to be cleaned. They've never been cleaned. This cleaning will provide a healthier environment for the employees and the public. This work is currently in the works. Right now, we've completed the third floor and have moved to the second floor. So there a tiny bit ahead of schedule, but I don't want to be, I don't want to let everybody think that we're not going to take as long as we anticipated, which was a week per floor. So we'll see how it goes. The cost of this is $42,143, and it is our first priority. Second is the building humidity, which is again, the third OSHA recommendation. The OSHA study found that the humidity inside the municipal building was very low. It's about 21 to 23. I keep a little measure in my office, and it can be as low as 16. Doesn't, especially over the winter, never goes above 20 or 21. So we would like to get some humidity added to the building. And what happens if you don't do that? Though humidity causes health-related problems like drying of the membranes and discomfort for people who have who dry up that respiratory system. The relative humidity is recommended to be maintained at 30 to 60%. Like I said, ours is more like 16 to 23, and it estimated cost of that project is $120,000. That is our second priority. The third priority is the transfer station roof replacement. This is a big ticket item, and that's, that's one of the reasons, well, the majority of the reasons for why it's in that priority. It's harder to come up with bigger dollar amounts. So we've asked for our big ticket items at the beginning. The transfer station, the roof on the old section of the transfer station is over 25 years old. It needs to be replaced. The roof is starting to leak in some areas, and the membrane is beginning to detach from the sublayers. This detachment causes bubbles that could cause large holes to be ripped in the membrane. The estimated replacement cost is $300,000. Our fourth priority, again, another big ticket item, ice and events center roof replacement. The lower section only of the ice and events center roof over the vendor kitchen lobby and restroom areas is the original to the building. And it's been repaired multiple times in the last few years. The roof's old, needs to be replaced to protect what's inside. We've completed engineering on this roof. We did pay the $22,500 out of CIP funds that we have available, and that replacement cost is estimated to be $125,000. That is our fourth priority. The one more roof, the Kiwanis Community House roof replacement is number five on our list. This roof again is the original to the building, consists of two different types of roof material. The HVAC equipment is housed in the dormers on the back of the building and sit on rubber membrane roofing that leak on a regular basis right now. The rest of the building is made up of asphalt shingles, and it's just starting to leak. So the estimated replacement cost is $100,000, and again, an investment for the future of that building. Item number six, fuel system upgrade. Fuel sites at Prairie View Golf, Airport Golf, Parks Maintenance, and the cemetery are currently on a paper system. So every time equipment or vehicles are fueled at those locations, the employee has to write down the block number, the date, the mileage, the type of fuel, the number of gallons they pumped, the license number on the vehicle or equipment, and the department. Then that paperwork goes to fleet who inputs the information into a spreadsheet that gets uploaded to work management. And so we then charge out the customer. The proposed system, which is currently used at fleet maintenance, sanitation, and street and alley, will install new hardware for card readers and software for each site and new pumps at the cemetery and parks maintenance. And that would eliminate the need for paper records. The estimated cost is $87,409.42. We just received that quote the other day. It would have to go up to bid, obviously, but this is something that's going to just make fleet so much more efficient for those locations, the Gulf, Prairie View Golf, Airport Golf, Parks Maintenance, and the Cemetery. That is our sixth priority. Number seven, ADA doors hardware and fob access for the municipal building. Most of the doors in the municipal building are original to the building and don't meet ADA standards due to the handle hardware, the closure strength, accessibility. They provide little in the way of security features and leave our employees vulnerable to outside threats. In addition, becoming ADA compliant, if each hallway office door had card access, so basically a fob on each door, we could control who has access to each office and when access would be available. This would include new doors, lever locks, accessible door operators, and door striking card reader for 30 doors. The estimated cost is $250,000. And those doors, if we replace them, would look similar to what the the door, the security door that's by the elevators looks like now. So that is priority number seven. Number eight is street and alley replacement door and security cameras. Walk doors at this facility are original to the building and are exposed to very corrosive material on a regular basis. The doors are rusted due to magnesium chloride that we put on the streets and water exposure. The doors and the frames are in bad shape and simply need to be replaced. The building at 110 Cleveland Place is where our street and alley is located is in an industrial part of the city, and this store is isolated from view. We have had a break-in at this facility through those doors. Adding security cameras would increase security of the facility. The estimated cost is $30,000, and that is again priority number eight. Priority number nine, a cart washer for sanitation. This is a cabinet-style cart washer for residential-type rolling carts, the kind that you have at your home. Currently, we use a hose to clean the carts. The worst part of that, and I just want to say yuck every time I think about it, the worst part is whatever's inside blows back in your face when you hose it out, when you hose out those containers. So it's pretty disgusting. The carts need to be cleaned before they're placed in any residence. When residents move out, we clean the carts. After Shining Frontier Days, for example, we have 100, approximately 100 carts out there, maybe more. Beer Fest, other weekly events that are held throughout the city, those carts just simply need to be cleaned constantly. The cart washer is a sealed unit that sanitizes each cart, and employees are again, not subject to that residual waste or blowback in the face from the containers or from the hose. The estimated cost of the unit and installation is $50,000. That is our priority number nine. Priority number 10, security cameras at the landfill. Happy Jack landfill expansion includes a new scale house and administrative building. The landfill is located approximately 10 miles from the city, and these buildings are more isolated. So the the new buildings are further from Happy Jack Road than in the past, so more trucks can queue on our property as opposed to queuing on the road. Cameras would provide better security, would allow our gate attendant to view loads from the top, ensuring that we're only accepting items allowed by our permit. Currently, we just do the best we can to look inside those trucks, but a video camera would give us a view from the top so we can look down into the truck and see what's actually in there. The estimated cost of that of that unit is $25,000, the security cameras. And that is all I have. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Hey, any members of council have any questions for Ms. Nemechek?
Chairman Escobille, this is Councilman Royball.
Go ahead.
Good. Vicki, number seven, the ADA doors hardware and hardware. If we install ADA doors, will that trigger any other ADA accessibility or ADA things that we'd have to install?
What we normally do is we have a plan to implement certain aspects of the ADA. We'd hope that all of those could be implemented in a renovation of a municipal building, but in the meantime, we can do, we can plan, put together a plan and say, this is what we're going to do next. So we have some things being upgraded as we go. So no, it would not trigger any additional ADA requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, this is Councilman Cook. I have a question.
Okay, Councilman Cook, go ahead.
Yes, Director, I'm just, I'm curious. Just in regards to the two, well, all the roofing projects, but specifically, I guess, to the Ice and Events Center and the Kiwanis Community House. Is there no possibility of using any kind of insurance on those, or does your numbers take that into account, or?
Through you, Chair. Mr. Cook, the, actually, what's happened to those roofs is they've just worn out. There's really not damage that's attributable to any storm events or anything like that. Although we've had them looked at, we do not anticipate any cost share from the insurance company.
Okay, I figured you had done that. I know, I know we've, we've done that in the past on another thing. So I just figured I'd ask you. Thank you.
Any other council questions? Hearing none, I guess we'll move on to compliance. Mr. Trembaugh, we have you.
Yes, this is Wes, Assistant Chief Building Official. We've got a few items, actually six. Number one priority for us is permitting and licensing software with Blue Beam integration. And this, this particular package is from OpenGov, and they're, they've got a software package that provides quite a bit more flexibility than what COM Dev that we are currently using now would help us out in permitting, licensing, all different kinds of aspects that would, that is conducive to what we do here in compliance. It seems to be a very good software package that we're seriously looking into. And it's also going to be a little, a lot more transparent as far as public access as well, to be able to look at their permits and, and basically schedule inspections and, and the like. So, you know, it's, that's why we're really looking into this. It would really be helpful if we could get this package, you know, installed in our system here. So so on to number two.
Let me stop you for a sec. We're not getting the slide on our Zoom.
Oh, okay. Let me see what I can do.
Are you getting it now?
Yep, we got it now. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we all good? Okay, so moving on to number two, we're looking at getting at least more, three more two-in-one computers to help out with, with those having to work from home from time to time due to COVID. And then also two to help out in the field. Those two-in-ones become, are becoming very, very handy for us, and we're using those exclusively as compared to the use of the iPads that we had a while back. So we're looking at 6,000 for that, and we back up just a second as far as ranking of number one there. That's $454,375 is what it's going to take for this, for the new software package, and it's a one-time fee we're looking at for a five-year plan. So sorry about skipping around. Okay, then going on to number three, again, we're just looking at some more monitors to enable the staff to work remotely with more efficiency. Double monitors are really helping us out, especially for plan reviews. Permit techs are using double monitors so they can bring up multiple screens to facilitate helping, well, to be more streamlined in helping the public as well as the rest of us inspectors and everyone within our department. And we're looking at $1,600 for, for new monitors. Number four, we're looking at wireless keyboards and mouses. Basically, it's the same as for the monitors. We need them to help streamline our workflow and to help us be more efficient in all areas in the field and the office. And then moving on to number five and six, these are for our, for our field personnel. We're looking at high visibility, all-weather coats. We're looking at five of those because we get out there rain or shine. We're like the postal service. We get out there no matter what, and no matter what the weather is. So we're looking at $450 to help out with the cost of coats. Same thing for the vests. Item number six, we're asking for 400 there so we can get a, get the high-visibility vest and also to help out with being, well, as the name implies, high visibility because we're in lots of construction sites, and mostly the commercial construction sites is where a lot of these are required PPEs. And these vests, they just don't last very long, so we do go through them quite quickly. So that's why we're asking for a little bit of money there to help out with the high-visibility vests. And with that, does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Mr. White?
Go ahead, Tom.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yes, sir. Thank you. On the computer system. A while back, I spoke with the mayor, and he was envisioning a computer system that, for example, permitting for business or building permits could be done online. Is this the computer system that everybody's been waiting for? That I can't answer directly. I do understand that this, this particular system will help facilitate the online permitting process a lot better than our current COM Dev system that we have now.
I don't think our system now does any online.
Well, I mean, our, well, our permit checks take care of it and are basically walking the folks through on, online permitting. Right now, we're doing that for roofing permits, and because of the COVID, it's been, it's been a real struggle. And hence the reason why we're wanting to go with this newer software package.
I would, I would need to know that this is the system that everybody wants before I could, before I could vote for it.
Absolutely, certainly. I would like to be able to provide you with that information. As, as we look a little bit deeper into this, I can get with Bruce, and since he is out today, I apologize. I'm sitting in for him. He knows a little bit more about what's been said behind the scenes as far as if this is in fact is the operating package that everyone's been talking about. I can attest to that at this time.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
I don't know why it's not working. So sorry. Can you hear me at all?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, so I can speak to this just a little bit, and I don't know if Vicki is still on, but I know across the departments, I spoke to Charles this morning. They also have another kind of software that has modules that work within each of our departments, and this may be part of that. So I know we're going to hear more about that next week, but I will get you guys, I think the full scope of what they're asking for and how it works. We'll get that sent over to you all so we can kind of see what each module is and each component and how it fits in with our departments and being able to provide online services. I do know this is part of the request. So I will get that to you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Renee. Dr. Aldrich, you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Chairman Escobille. Through you, I guess one of my questions is, is anytime we talk about software, a lot of times we're talking about the licensing fees. And this looks like you've built in the five-year plan for licensing and the initial purchase. I'm, I'm just wondering if your department has a plan for, you know, at the end of five years, we obviously don't want to lose all of our records, and we want to be able to continue on if the system works well for us. What kind of annual cost is there with this licensing? And I know it's hard to project five years out, but right now, what is an annual expense of this particular software package?
Oh, the figures that I have, I'm sorry.
No, that was the end of my question.
Oh, okay. From the figures that I have here on the back of this sheet here, talks about the, the subscription is $67,435 on an annual basis, and then a service fee of $49,765, which is just a one-time fee. So the total first, first year cost is $117,200. So it looks like that, that's projected price for the entire five years. So as far as what it's going to cost thereafter, I'm just kind of basing it off of what I see here. It looks like it's an additional $67,000 roughly per annually for this package.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Chairman. This is Robin.
Yeah, Treasure Luckman, go ahead.
I would like to add as well as we are currently paying annual fees for our current software. The total amount for all of our software, including our financial package, is about $120,000 a year. And so we won't be paying those fees if we switch to this new software, so that will offset it degree.
Thank you, Robin.
All right. Almost a savings.
We can always hope, Chairman.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions from council? Hey, Harry Nun, Cheyenne Fire and Rescue Chief Copper, we have you on.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, John Copper, Fire Chief, Cheyenne Fire Rescue. Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members, for the opportunity to discuss our American Rescue Plan requests. Our requests are essentially broken down into three major areas to include technology, personnel, PPE, and equipment. I have trimmed down the requests over the last couple of weeks to better reflect our needs, shortfalls, any, any planned requirements. I also looked closely at some continual costs or future obligations for the city after this one-time money. So I did trim it up quite a bit. We are also looking at partner with, partnering with our community or county emergency response partners as they work through their ARPA requests also. As you are aware, the pandemic has affected Cheyenne Fire on many levels. It has increased our overtime cost due to exposure and illness. It has decreased our shelf life on PPE and equipment due to use, exposure, and decontamination efforts. It has reduced our staffing levels through revenue reduction, thus increasing overtime for daily coverage. It has also taken a mental, mental toll on personnel because of the longevity and unknown nature of this pandemic. We are seeing more behavioral health issues because of this to include depression, anxiety, and insomnia. We're dealing with this with our personnel, but moreover, we are encountering quite a bit of this with our customers when we respond to incidents. We are finding ourselves dealing with more of these behavioral health issues as we journey through this pandemic. We believe the asks associated with the ARPA funds are in line with the criteria and the spirit of the intent of legislation. Working through this spreadsheet, our first request is for replacement of PPE. And again, that's because of exposure usage and decontamination efforts after each call. Utilization of electronic spray guns will greatly increase equipment shelf life due to breaking down of materials because of liquid chemical uses after each use. Additional extractors and dryers will also, will also decrease our personal protective equipment downtimes associated with limited use and current locations throughout the city. Our dual-spec gear is being, is essential. It's saving the uses on our bunker gear because of the amount of call volume. And obviously, we're going through quite a bit of masks, gloves, and disposable coveralls as the pandemic lags on. The next several requests are directly correlated with technology. So far to date, we're pretty proud of what we've accomplished since January with Cheyenne Fire tech advances within the organization. We now respond via digital dispatch application where calls are displayed, mapped, and tracked real-time on a digital platform. We've also incorporated a digital dashboard for all outlining, outlining fire stations, administration, and training to communicate real data, agency information, staffing, policy updates, road closures, critical shift information, pandemic issues, and equipment and personnel status. This is, this has so far improved our response times and our internal organizational communications. As you can see, one of the requests is for a lab tech scheduling software. We've already purchased the platform and are currently building the parameters for the usage of the program. And this is the application that eliminates the paper use of the overtime roster and streamlines the process, making it faster and impartial. The next request is for incident action plan software for, for major incidents and for all hazard response incidents. It integrates the National Incident Management System compliant issues with the incident command system that has the forms and the processes to help manage incidents throughout all stages of an event. And this product can be utilized not only by FIRE but also PD as well. Another request is for EMS and fire training platform. It's a learning management system that streamlines the training experience for our fire department. It offers more than 1,000 online fire and EMS courses to ensure that, that our staff currently maintains any licensure certification and ISO-required training. It's an on-demand system available anytime, allowing firefighters' flexibility and availability from any digital platform. The content is constantly being updated to reflect industry improvements and technology. Another request is for peer support training. As I stated, there's, we are encountering an increase in behavioral health issues. We're requesting peer support training for occupational safety and health and wellness program through the International Association of Firefighters. It basically gives members the training necessary to provide direct support to their peers, give a basic understanding of common behavioral health issues affecting the fire service today. And that, that program aligns with our occupational safety and health and wellness program at Cheyenne Fire and Rescue. We also have a request for revenue replacement for rift personnel and overtime costs associated with the reduction in force and COVID-related illness and exposures. In 2020, as you know, we riffed five personnel because of revenue reductions. They were a full-time office assistant, a public information officer, and we had Uh, they were a full-time office assistant, a public information officer, and we had three firefighter positions. The reduction enforced, um, caused overtimes due to minimum staffing requirements, outlining the collective labor agreement. Uh, we also eliminated the uniform stipend in twenty twenty-one contract due to the revenue reductions, uh, because of sales tax. The hope is to supplement or offset additional costs and general fund shortfalls associated with the reduction in force, because we seem to, it seems to be catching up with us, uh, currently right now. An example, uh, we've gone through approximately in the last four months, we've gone through half of our overtime budget. Um, so I'm estimating at a minimum, we're going to be short two hundred thousand dollars just in overtime costs associated with some, these revenue reductions. Uh, this pretty much sums up the request for, for, uh, our ARP. Uh, for the sake of time, I'd be more than happy to, uh, set up a time, uh, I want to be cognizant of everyone else's time and them giving, um, an overview of their, their programs. Um, I'd be so, I'd be more than happy to set up a demo of, of any, any type of, uh, programs or software. So thank you for your consideration. I stand for any questions, and I believe, uh, Chief Dyke Shorn is also available for any questions also.
Hey, any council members have, uh, questions for Chief Copper?
This is Dr. Aldrich, I do.
Go ahead, Dr. Aldrich.
Yep, through you Chairman Royal, or Chairman Escobal, um, I'm sorry about that, so you used Chairman Royal. Um, I, Chief Copper, I'm just curious, you said that you're working with the county to, buy in tandem for, I'm guessing for, um, quantity and things like that. On the software, the different software packages and computer, um, programs, is that, uh, a shared cost at all, or is that the complete cost? It, it would, we would, uh, incur, um, for those packages? And, um, is there an ongoing cost, um, of, about what is the annual cost that would be ongoing? Once this funding ends, in order to maintain those?
Sure, through you, uh, Chair to Dr. Aldrich. Um, the cost is approximately, uh, ten thousand dollars a year. We didn't, we didn't look at a shared cost with the county for that, we were looking for other things that, that I, that I, uh, kind of cut out of the, the ARPA request. Uh, things like the incident management team trailer and, and getting some training for a type-three type, um, incident management team where we have a major incident that comes through Cheyenne and it requires multiple resources. But as far as the software, we did not, uh, look at partnering with the, the county on that.
And then a follow-up question, uh, have you considered sharing the public information officer with the police department?
Uh, I have considered it, uh, be more than happy to let Chief Francisco answer that question, but,
Okay.
Uh, we, we, yeah, we have, we've had conversations about that.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is, uh, Councilman Royal, could you go over the Spartan refurbishment one more time?
Sure, absolutely. That, that is, uh, the through you chair to, um, Councilman Royal. That is the, the use, the fire engine that we purchased. And, um, we currently, I, I think we spent approximately, to date, approximately twenty thousand dollars to get the pump up, uh, up and running. Uh, I'm looking at, we, we spent five thousand dollars on that, that apparatus to do, to utilize it as a reserve apparatus, uh, as a backup. We're estimating approximately, we're going to spend between twenty-five and thirty-five to get it on the street, up and running and going. Uh, there are some additional niceties to have. Um, obviously, it still has some striping and things from the previous department that, uh, that it, that it came from, uh, and then some additional equipment, so that's, that's the overview on that one.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman Seagrave.
Councilman Seagrave, go ahead.
Yes, sir, through you, chief. Uh, you've got, uh, four hundred and sixty-five thousand for staff, uh, what happens when that runs out? Do you have funding sources to keep them on?
Through your chair to, uh, Councilman Seagraves, uh, again, that was to, to supplement what we lost. Uh, really wasn't looking ahead. Obviously, we, uh, going forward, we are, uh, through this budget session, I think everyone knows at this point, my number is, is to get at a hundred personnel, going from ninety-one to a hundred. However, we do that, uh, whether it's through safer, uh, we will be putting in for safer. Um, but that is, that's more of a, a supplement to offset the costs associated with what we're currently going through.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, any other questions for Chief Copper? Harry Nun, we'll move on to Cheyenne PD and Chief Francisco.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. I, uh, we have, we have six items to present, uh, the, our first priority being a crime analyst. We, uh, we have, um, access here to a, a vast amount of data. And, um, we've, we've found that, um, putting into a uniform format is, is really, uh, more than a full-time job. So, um, it's, it's no secret that I think the Cheyenne Police Department has sought a crime analyst at least in the last couple of budget cycles. Um, so we are, um, you know, if anything, the, the evaluating crime has got more complicated with COVID and, and jail and prosecution issues have, have made the tracking of crime and, and predicting where it's, it's going to happen even more difficult. So, um, what you have there at three hundred and thirty-two, two thousand dollars is a four-year cost, uh, based on a, uh, salary and benefit package of about eighty-three thousand dollars a year. Um, so we're, we're looking to, um, fund that for four years. Uh, the next items on our list, I'm going to share a screen with you. Says I can't share while the other participant is sharing. Can somebody, there we go. Bear with me just a second. My, uh, my assistant, David here is trying to work me through the technology share, there we go. There we go. Okay, so, um, the rest of our, um, needs assessment deals with our firearms training center out on, uh, Happy Jack Road, so we're out, out near the landfill there. Um, it's about twenty years old and has not been essentially updated since. Um, what you see here is an overhead view of the range facility, number one being the classroom facility and firearms maintenance facility, number two being the main, um, training deck. And number three being the live-fire shoot house. Um, the action target system, the computer control system that, that runs, um, the range hasn't been updated. Like I said, in twenty years, um, all the software is out of date, it can't be updated. The mechanical systems are frequently malfunctioning and need to be replaced. And so that target system and mechanical, um, update, we're estimating at about fifty thousand dollars. Um, next is, uh, what we call the knee wall. You'll, you'll see there in your pictures the deteriorated state of that knee wall. It protects the, um, mechanical systems that are associated with the target turning system. Um, it either needs to be repaired or replaced and, and we have that estimated at about, uh, ten thousand dollars. Um, next on our list, this is our live-fire shoot house, you can see it's, uh, essentially falling down at this point. Uh, it was made out of some donated barricades and, and so forth. And we don't, um, anticipate replacing that, we would like to switch to a different system that does not use live-fire. It uses sim- simulation rounds and is much more versatile, um, and safer to use on a daily training basis. So the removal of that, um, that structure and replace it with a, um, classroom-type, uh, um, situational training house, if you will, that has movable walls. So we can configure it to use, um, in a variety of different training scenarios. So those two things together would be about, um, two hundred thousand dollars. And then we, uh, the, the current setup of the classroom could use some remodeling to make it more functional for our needs. We would anticipate doing a lot of that work ourselves, but we would need probably twenty thousand dollars to, um, remove some of the interior walls and reconstruct it the way it needs to be, so we would need some materials. And then that main chute, um, deck, the, that was labeled number one is, is what we mainly use for training. It, uh, has been determined that it would really be more functional if that was asphalted instead of gravel. It's, it's difficult to maintain and hard to use in the winter. And, and then the gravel makes it difficult to clean up, uh, the debris and, and empty cartridges from training. And we estimate the cost to asphalt that main training deck to be fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, and that's all we have, and I would entertain any questions.
Any members of council have questions for Chief Francisco?
This is Dr. Aldrich, I have some questions.
Go ahead, Dr. Aldrich.
Yeah, through you Chairman Escobal, um, so Chief Francisco, I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration given to, um, a shared facility with Laramie County Sheriff's Department with the FU Warren Air Force Base. I mean, we have several entities that I'm guessing all use something similar for training. And I'm just wondering if there might be some savings if we were to share and work together on that effort.
Mr. Chair, to Dr. Aldrich, um, that, that is a possibility. And we have, we have shared in the past, especially with the, um, sheriff's office. But when they built the Archer facility, they, they've moved all their, um, training out there. So I think their facility is, um, covered and spoken for, um, and they have not particularly, um, indicated a willingness to share that facility with us. Um, as far as the air force base, I, I am not sure what, um, what their training needs or, or facility is there. But that is certainly something that could be explored. Um, I would say we do share some with some federal, uh, partners, but they, they use it pretty sparingly and just to do some, um, some qualification. And, um, we, uh, we use it quite frequently. We, uh, as, as the council mayor may not know, uh, we frequently have, hold training on Wednesdays. Um, and, and so at least once a month, there's firearms training, but there's also, uh, bomb training, a K-9 training, there's, so there's a lot of things going on out there besides just firearms training. So, um, it, it, the, the time out there has taken up quite a bit with our needs, but it, it is not to say we couldn't explore those options.
So as a follow-up, uh, Chairman Escobal.
Go ahead.
Have we looked, um, at the possibility of allowing smaller communities to schedule this facility to use it? Um, for some sort of a fee to help offset the, uh, maintenance cost?
Um, through you, uh, Chairman Escobal to Dr. Aldrich, uh, we have and do do that. We, we have a, a system that charges, uh, ten dollars per person, um, to, to come out there and use that. So there's a little bit of that going on.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other members of council have any questions for Chief Francisco? Any questions overall? On the four presentations? Uh, the only other thing that I would probably add to council is when you're starting to go through this and you're looking at your two pots of money is to come up with your own little priority list when we get together. Finally, probably to Renee or Robin on ARPA money. Especially when we're looking at PPE or software, computer upgrades, security upgrades, are there possibilities of match money out there?
I can certainly start looking to see, the hard thing is, is you can't, it can't be federal money. You can't match federal with federal, so it limits us a little bit. Um, I think, but, so my takeaway from today is to kind of relook at our technology requests and make sure that we have, I, I guess a more comprehensive idea of what it is we're asking for as a whole, instead of just a list and how to integrate. Is that what you're looking for? And also maybe look at what we're currently spending, um, for our, our annual subscriptions across the board, so I can get you those numbers versus the numbers we're asking for. We might try to find tune that a little bit, is that what you're kind of looking for?
Yeah. Yeah, other grants that were available, certainly not federal grants, but that was probably it, so we'll meet again next Friday, right?
Yes, and next Friday, it's going to be, um, engineering, planning and both of them.
All right, no other final questions from council? Then we are adjourned, see you next week. Thank you.